Too bad, I already wrote my thing.
No.
I'd like to call this meeting to order. If you'll all please rise for invocation by Pastor Tony Henry and stay standing for our Pledge of Allegiance.
Father, thank you for your presence in this meeting this morning. Thank you for this wonderful country that you've given us to live in. We thank you for this county that each of us are blessed to be a part of. We thank you for each supervisor and all of those who give with their time and their expertise to help govern our county in which our families live, work, and play. Father, we ask for blessings over all of those in attendance this morning. Help them to have a heart for our county. Give them wisdom and discernment, guide and protect them as they make decisions that impact all of Mohave County's citizens. May their discussions and decisions not only bring you glory but also be beneficial for all of our communities. Father, I ask you to be with those who are hurting, struggling, and experiencing difficulties right now. You know all of their needs. Help them to find direction and help, and may our communities be a source of hope for them. Father, we ask you to be with our first responders and our health coworkers, especially the firefighters still working on our mountain. Keep them safe and healthy as they work faithfully to keep us healthy and safe. Father, be with our schools, all of our teachers and admins and bus drivers and custodians, and especially the kids as this crazy year comes to an end. Father, be with our local businesses, the owners and employees. Help them to continue to grow and to prosper. Be with our churches and nonprofits as they reach out and minister in their unique ways in our communities. Help us all come together and to support one another. Father, again, we thank you for these individuals who you've called to this time and to this place. Though it's not always easy, help them to listen patiently and receptively and to speak up and out when it's necessary to benefit the people they serve, especially given the unique challenges that we face today. Father, may we be guided by your love, your spirit, and your fairness. It's in your wonderful name of Jesus that we pray. Amen. Thank you, Father.
Amen. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, do we have Supervisor Lingefelter on the phone?
Supervisor Lingefelter, are you there?
Yes, I am, thank you.
Yes, he is.
I need a motion to call for an executive session to be held May 17, 2021 at 9:00 AM.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, no further discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We have no minutes, Madam Clerk.
No, sir, not today.
Committee of your legislative reports. Supervisor Angus.
Thank you. I attended the CSA LPC. We're just sort of waiting for the budget to be confirmed, signed off. I'm hearing maybe as early as the end of this week, so next meeting there'll be a lot to talk about. Thank you.
Supervisor Bishop.
I also attended the CSA meeting and also the Workforce Development Committee meeting and the Tri-City Council meeting. Thank you.
Supervisor Lingefelter.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last Thursday, April 29, the Arizona Capitol side hosted a morning scoop panel discussion event on the Arizona Capitol. Regina Cobb of Iowa for the panelists, and she did a wonderful job on a lot of the issues in Mohave County. The event will be used as springboard for the first of Mohave County West Basin Modern Users Study Committee for the remainder of the year. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Lingefelter. Supervisor Gould.
None today, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, just so you know, I couldn't understand much of what Supervisor Lingefelter had to say, so I don't know if the audience could hear or not, but...
Supervisor Lingefelter, can you submit what you wrote or what you read?
I'll submit that to the board.
Thank you, Supervisor. County Manager's report.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Board members. I only have one item, and it relates to CSA budget. The fiscal year 2021/2022 budget is currently being prepared for CSA. They have a recommendation proposing a 20% adjustment to the service fees. The last time CSA adjusted their budget was six years ago. This is anticipated to be in place between three and five years. The service fee is currently $59,468. A 20% increase is of $11,894 for a subtotal of $71,362. The building maintenance fund for CSA building is $6,700, and that remains as is unchanged. And as you know, all counties contribute to the CSA budget. The increase is really targeted for staff recruitment, retention, and development, stakeholder outreach, engagement, and so on. As you know, CSA has been very effective in serving the board members as well as county managers and staff, so I just, I know they did send out information to all board members related to this. I wasn't sure if you had a chance to review it, so I wanted to bring it up and make you aware of it. That's all I have, unless you have any question for me. Thank you.
Can you send a copy of that? Send a copy of that to us? I don't think I received anything.
Mr. Chairman, Board members, I'll be more than happy to do so.
Thank you. All right, we'll go to call to the public. Gail LaPointe.
Do you have any idea if it'll pick up my... Pictures. Good morning, Board. I'm here. I'm Gail LaPointe from 4001 East Ryan, and I'm looking for more help in cleaning up my neighborhood. This is, these are the things that magically appear in my neighborhood. Now, this is one block from 3951 to 4070. I hear programs about abatement properties, and I can't seem to find more information on these. This lot, actually, I've been trying for three years. So I'm truthfully looking for help. I need to know who to see. I need to know how to get phone calls returned or emails returned, or I just don't think that I should have to live in the slums of Kingman. Kingman's not a slum area. Every area, every county has a lesser income, but lesser-income people have to have a place to live, too. We can't all afford $200,000 homes. I just want my neighborhood to be clean and free of debris that looks like this, so I'm asking for help. Mr. Lingefelter is my new supervisor, and I'm hoping that he will have suggestions. I have an email into him and his assistant. I haven't heard anything yet. So I'm looking for help, and I'm just really hoping there's good people on my street. They won't come to meetings because they've been here longer than I, and they find that it's a waste of their time because we get no help. So I'm hoping that you won't waste my time, that you will help me somehow get these properties cleaned up, abated, whatever. I don't know what the idea is, but abandoned vehicles is even worse. It's getting worse. All of a sudden, they just show up. One day, they're not there; the next day, they're there. They have plates on them. I don't know if they're expired, but the Sheriff Department says they can't do anything because they're on private property. I don't know. I would think if it's a stolen vehicle or a vehicle without... We have laws on the books because I've researched that. There are ordinances, but we don't abide by them, or we can't, I can't get anybody to abide by them, to help me with this. So I'm just asking for help, and I hope that somebody will get back to me, please. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. The Board cannot respond at call to the public. Kenny Works.
Kenny Works, Yucca, Arizona. "For try as one may to expel nature with a hay fork, it will always come back." Leo Strauss from On Tyranny, 1961. "County government must seize control of this morally-evolving doctrinaire approach to governing easements. At least ask risk assessment and/or the sheriff to have a look at Section 11-116192, 16 North, 19 West. That's Section 11 along I-40. Moral concerns: landlocked properties, access blocked after at least four decades of free movement, and roads and streets on the plot maps have never been staked, cut through, or built on a development that predates I-40. Somehow, this is supervised doctrine? Legislation must be at least in the conversation." Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Chris Rodarte.
Chris Rodarte, Kingman. "Those who vote decide nothing. Those who count the votes decide everything." Soviet dictator Joseph Stalin said that, and sadly, almost unbelievably, last election, we saw it play out in our beloved United States of America. Election integrity is vital to the health and continuity of our republic. The Wuhan flu plandemic of 2020 and beyond opened the door to fraud, inviting corruption and cheating in our national and local elections. Once again, we, the people, were scammed, this time into believing we must shudder in our homes anxiously awaiting the U.S. Postal Service delivery of millions of unsolicited ballots. Americans were told we could then safely vote and return these ballots by mail for machine counting while never disrupting our quarantine status, all in the name of security, health, and protection from a virus with a 99% recovery rate. Those who bravely ventured out, fully masked, of course, to cast votes at the early voting centers, were assured of the validity of machine-generated ballots. We've been told the Mohave County vote count was sound. We all saw what happened in Maricopa. The audit continues, being fought every step of the way by mostly Democrats. Do we want to open our county up to voter fraud? Item #50 on today's agenda invites election tampering, corruption, and theft. Here's an idea: same-day voting with paper ballots. Vote count conducted in the precinct where votes were cast. No unsolicited mail-out ballots and no early voting. No voting centers. In the 1960s, we voted on Election Day. The polls were open from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Voters would go before work, at lunch, or after work. Some employers even offered extended lunch hours to accommodate employees. We entered a booth, voted on paper, dropped it in a ballot box, and kept a paper stub. By 9:00 p.m., the three major networks announced the outcome. Now, in our technologically-advanced, sophisticated world, it takes weeks and weeks before we know who our elected officials are. Perhaps a return to the old-fashioned method of marking a box beside a name can save the system and restore the republic. We aren't forced to spend the government Hava election security money, Mohave County. Vote no on Item 50. Thank you.
Scotty McClure.
I remember being up here about a month ago, and you guys opened the libraries back up, or so you thought. You guys were really adamant, five-to-nothing vote. I've never seen you guys say, "Open it!" And that gal that's in charge of it, "I'm so livid at her, she worked for me, I'd fire." I want my newspapers back like I wanted before. She has gotten the Minor and the Standard back, and that's it. I want the Las Vegas Review-Journal, the Havasu paper, USA, World News, et cetera, et cetera, what we had before. Been to the newspaper there in Akoma Boulevard at Lake Havasu. She has not ordered them. I've been there twice in the last month. In fact, last Monday was the last time. She needs to order them in order to get them there. They're not going to just set them. So she needs to do her job. You guys were really adamant about opening up the library. I want my pencils back on the table. I want my table back that I used to sit at. We can still six-feed it there because people are still afraid to go to the library, so it's going to take a while for people to start bringing their kids in there. If I had kids, I wouldn't go back in with my kids. Oh, this emergency alert system. You guys did an F on this flag fire after I was watching TV, and that emergency alert system came on. What a joke! It did not work. You bought the cheapest damn system in the world anyway. Those there are only about $30,000. Those ones that go across the thing there from Phoenix, those cost about $300,000. But you guys, years ago, went the cheapest way. You bought something that don't work. And if I lived out in that Pine area, I was in Bullhead watching TV. Went off at 5:55 this morning and 6:35 this morning because the dispatch presses a button over there. It goes off, that's fine. But when she actually had to press another button, "Hey, we got a problem here. We got a flag going. Get the hell out of Pine Hill," et cetera, it was so screwed up and muzzled up. The sheriff really did a lousy job on that, and I keep watching the TV all day because I have to rest. My legs don't work afternoon. So I was there all day waiting for you guys to fix it. You didn't because you can't. You got junk. If the dam bursts up in Lake Powell, or we got some flood going down there at Fort Mohave, we need to know that something's happening. You guys did an F on this alert system. Maybe we ought to have the government down there. And in these channels you got on there, ah, these new ones you're adding, and the ones you've put on there, and now they're gone again. Did you guys know you're in charge of the channels, but you don't do anything? And I'd like to see a microwave this meeting here so I don't have to come all the way up here. I'd like to see a microwave. You're already running on the towers to Lake Havasu. I'd like to see the Lake Havasu.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, do you have a call to the public?
Chairman Johnson, yes, I do. I have one submission submitted by Melissa Wolfe. It reads, "I'm old enough to remember when the Mohave County Board of Supervisors conducted county business at their meetings. Now, the board spends much of its time coming up with meaningless resolutions to discuss and vote on, pushing the Republican state legislature's messaging regarding so-called voter fraud and fear-mongering over hypothetical situations like what to do if border migrants come to Mohave County, or what I'll do if Joe Biden tries to take my guns. You were elected to conduct the business of the county, not to use board meetings as a vehicle to push your own personal political agenda or to show support for whatever bogus theory the Arizona GOP, state legislature, or Governor Ducey is pushing that week. With that in mind, why don't you finally approve the Election Department's request before grant funding is lost and stop using it as a political football?"
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a proclamation to approve the adoption of declaring April as Fair Housing Month in Mohave County, Arizona. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, no further discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. I also need the adoption proclamation declaring May 9 to May 15 Economic Development Week in Mohave County, Arizona. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Move on to consent. I've had a request to pull Item 42. Supervisor Gould, do you have anything?
None today, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I need a motion to accept the consent, Items 5 through 41.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item 42, Supervisor Bishop.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to ask Byron Stewart if he could come up and give us a report on the Pine Lake fire, the flag fire, as it was called, and also explain what we've done to prevent forest fires in the past and what we're doing in the future. Thank you, Byron.
Thank you. Chairman Johnson, Supervisor Bishop, supervisors. Just to go briefly over some of the things that have occurred in the past and that occurred on the fire, I know some of you are familiar with the things we've done, some of you may not be, but I want to briefly go over that. You may be aware that the Pine Lake community has been classified for a number of years as a number-one at-risk mountain community in Arizona for wildfire. We have been working for many, many years on being prepared for a fire. The Pine Lake community itself put in a siren to warn their community members. They've, they practice year-round. Fire prohibitions up there, the people that live up there have been educated by Pine Lake Fire Department on what to do in a fire, when a fire occurs. A number of years ago, we started working in emergency management, started working with the BLM and State Forestry and Pine Lake Fire and our Walupai Mountain Park up there to be able to obtain funding to put in fuel breaks, do a few fuel modification projects, including cleaning up some of the undergrowth in the forest, also thinning trees. We were able to undertake quite a few projects using grant money as well as money that this board allocated to us after the 2013 fire on Dean Peak, where you allocated us $50,000 to do mitigation work up on the mountain. We've had extremely good working relationship and very good partners with the BLM, our local BLM field office, and our BLM fire team for this area of the state, also with State Forestry, who provided us with a number of grants. Emergency Management Coordinator Mike Browning was responsible for doing a lot of the projects, supervising them, that were done on the park itself and between the park and Pine Lake. One of the other things that we've done is we were able to obtain grant funding to put a siren up on the mountain. Emergency Management identified early on that one of the dangers up there would be if we had a lot of hikers on the mountain and they were not able to hear the siren in Pine Lake itself. So we put that in a few years ago with grant funding. The park itself tests that siren every week during fire season and have the capability to set it off. They educate everybody that comes up to the park in the siren use and what to do if it goes off. So every year, in the spring, we do a plan review for a fire and evacuation on the mountain, and as part of that, we do exercises, primarily tabletop exercises, and we identify scenarios where we want to be prepared for. And the most severe scenario, the worst-case one that we looked at, besides a fire that might cut off access to the mountain from, on Walupai Mountain Road, was an event that would occur on a holiday or a weekend in the park when there was a lot of people up there, when there might be a special event going on, when it was a no-notice evacuation with a high wind and extremely dry conditions. And that was our worst-case scenario that we practiced for, and that's exactly what happened. So when this fire occurred last Sunday, it was reported shortly after 2:00, and the Pine Lake Fire Chief Chris Schaefer responded to the fire and saw immediately that there was no way of preventing it from getting to Pine Lake and the park. It started about two miles south along Flag Mine Road from the community. He immediately made the evacuation decision. Jeremy Palmer, who's the superintendent of our park up there, as part of our pre-planning, we have radio communication between everybody up there. He was monitoring radio, and he heard what was going on. He independently made the decision to initiate evacuation from the park itself. So within about 25 minutes or so, I would estimate, of the fire starting, we were evacuating the park, followed by Pine Lake. Probably within the first hour, about 75% of the people in Pine Lake and all of the people in the park were evacuated. The BLM fire crews were up there as rapidly as possible to help Pine Lake. There was also requests made to our other fire departments in the county, and particularly in the Kingman area, but also from other departments, to send resources. The sheriff's office got up there very quickly to assume evacuation duties and to direct traffic control, set up roadblocks to prevent people from coming up there. The Public Works Department, immediately, when we were notified then, they sent water tenders up so we could have water for our fire crews. The sheriff's office itself, dispatch, immediately activated our emergency alert system, our Code RED system, and the, which is actually a system that goes to every cellphone within the impact area. It does not go across the county. It's supposed to go to every cellphone if it's in the impact area, and also it goes, activates the emergency alert system so it can break into radio stations with the evacuation notice. So that took place. We also notified the Red Cross. Red Cross immediately contacted KUSD to get Pala Christi Elementary available for evacuees from the fire. So all these things took place very rapidly, and we also sent our emergency management communications van up there as for backup communications in case we'd lost communications. When the fire came into the community that evening, the fire crews did an excellent job of putting out the spot fires and the slop-overs from the fire lines which threatened the homes there. As you know, the only structures that were lost were, I think, an outbuilding and a pump house, and there was a deck on one house that burned. Otherwise, the fire crews were able to protect all of the property up there. So I think this went as well as could be expected, and I think, I want to thank all of those people that I've just mentioned and all the agencies I've just mentioned, and I wish I could mention everybody by name, but everybody did their job almost to perfection, in my opinion, and followed the, I think it's a testament to the pre-planning that goes on up there. It's a testament to how our first responders work as a team. They always have here, and when you're able to pre-plan and work together like that, and that team includes not just the first responders, but the community, the citizens in the community as well. When you can do that, it's, you're much better prepared for these type of incidents. So just, also, I wanted to thank the BLM as well because they did pick up the suppression cost on this fire as well, so hopefully I haven't forgotten too many people, but the current... But the current status of the fire is obviously we've opened it back up for the citizens to return to Pine Lake. We did that on Friday. We'll be keeping other visitors out of the community and from the park. The park itself will be closed for a while. As you know, we brought in a type, or actually the BLM immediately identified that they need to bring in a Type III Incident Management Team to help on the fire and also to, or actually to supervise and run the suppression on the fire. And they followed that with a Type I team because of the magnitude and the complexity of the fire. So those teams did an excellent job. It is now, the Type I team did move out over the weekend. A type is reverted to a Type III team, and those crews are in there now assessing hotspots, assessing dangers in the fire area, and until they can give the go-ahead, we want to keep visitors out as much as possible from both the park and also in Pine Lake. The other thing that we'll be looking at doing is assessing the situation up there with regard to the burn scar and whether if we have the monsoon rains come in, if it's going to pose a threat to Pine Lake with flooding. So our fleet, or excuse me, our flood control division under Development Services will be looking at that this week, determining what may need to be done. As you know, a lot of the trees in the park itself burned, but a lot of them didn't. Some of those will probably be more healthy now because it's burned the undergrowth there and will allow them to flourish better. So but there'll be some of those trees that were heat-stressed by the fire that will probably die, so we'll have to be identifying resources to look at for possibly removing those trees. And working with the BLM and State Forestry like we've done for many years to assess the forest up there and determine what needs to be done to make it healthier, maybe a replanting operation on some trees as well. So with that, I think I'm pretty much done with my summary. We will be looking, I think, at in terms of the rest of the county, we feel the fire threat is high. I've sent out inquiries to our fire departments regarding where we might want to look at fire restrictions implemented within the county. And as soon as we get that information collected, I'll be, we'll be making recommendations to Chairman Johnson on whether we want to go into fire restrictions. This will probably be done before the next meeting, possibly within the next few days. So that's the end of my summary. So do you have any questions?
Supervisor Bishop, do you have anything else?
Byron, thank you for that report. Very good job, and I'm sure the entire community of Pine Lake appreciates the efforts. I do have some inquiries as to when the park might reopen for parties that have reservations up there for the recreational areas. Can you predict that at this point?
I can't predict it, but we are. Matter of fact, we're going to meet with the incident commander up there, contact him today to see if he can give some kind of idea on a timeline. I would anticipate it won't be too long, but I can't predict, because it's essentially up to the incident commander to determine whether it's safe or not. And those of you that are familiar with wildfires may understand that, and I've experienced myself, is you can get an outbreak of fire a week or two weeks, or sometimes a month after the initial fire, because what you get is smoldering inside of where stump holes are, smothering, or smoldering fires in other areas, and downed trees and logs. And this could break up out into open flame and, you know, create another fire situation if it gets into unburnt areas. So that's what the fire crews doing now to try to get all those things identified and get them taken care of, so we don't have another fire outbreak, so we don't have people that are up there trying to hike on the trails and get injured by some of these things that are going on up there. So we will be doing, besides what they're doing, emergency management in the park will be doing our own assessment of the trail system as well. And I think when it, when we do open up, it'll probably be in stages where the hiking trails will be shut down a little bit longer than the main part of the park.
Is the fire considered contained at this point, or percentage of containment?
When they, when the Type I team moved out, it was at 62% containment, and the new Type III team has moved in, and they have not reassessed that yet. So I have not got a, an update on the 62%. I suspect it's considerably higher than 62% right now, but I have not got that number yet.
Okay, okay. And I will be going up there this evening to take a tour and talk to some of the community members. Thank you. That's all the questions I have.
Supervisor Reagan.
I just wanted to say thank you for your team and the Incident Management Team. It was a phenomenal job. In my book, you get an A. And I just wanted to, it was just, I always got information, and I know a lot of people who lived up there, and I know that they were happy with the amount of information they got to. So I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Angus. And I want to thank the rest of the board as well, because you've always, since I've been here, the board has always been strong supporter of our preparedness measures up on the mountain and throughout the county for being ready for these type of events. And I've observed, as an emergency manager for a long time, I've observed what happens in other counties, and sometimes the emergency management department doesn't get the kind of support that you guys give us. So and we've gotten from, in the past, from Mike Hendricks and from Sam now, so appreciate that.
Supervisor Langenfelder, do you have any questions?
No, I would just check on what everybody else has said.
Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Byron, I just wanted to personally thank you for keeping me informed. I felt fully informed during the whole process, and I think you guys did a great job. And I want to thank everybody that worked on the fire and thank the citizens for being cooperative in evacuating when they needed to evacuate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman Johnson, I'd like to make a motion to ratify the declaration of fire emergency for Mojave County and the Walupai Mountain Park and direct the temporary closing of the Walupai Mountain Park until the emergency is lifted or until the threat to the park is declared over percent to ARS 26 through 11.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, discussion? I have a question, Byron, is have they discerned the, how the fire was started?
They're investigating, they're still investigating that. We know it was not naturally caused, so it was human caused, but they're still investigating to see if they could find out any more details.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
I will open item number 43, which is a public hearing. Discussion possible action, approve the adoption of Board of Supervisors Resolution I have no one signed up. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to address the board? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing. Have anything from the board members?
Chairman, question approved, Resolution 2021-049.
You have a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number 44 is a public hearing, and I will open it for discussion possible action. Board of Supervisors Resolution 2021-050. I have one person signed up. Scott Shreif. Okay, he's not here, but he did say he was in favor. Anyone else like to address the board? Close the public hearing. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Gould.
I move that item 44 be adopted.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number 45, I'll open the public hearing. Board of Supervisors Resolution 2021-051. I have one person, or a couple people signed up. John Culp.
Yes, I stand in opposition to rezoning to five acres. I'm a recent resident here. We came here, my wife and I, to live out there, my retirement on 15 acres. There are a couple landlocked parcels behind us that are five acre. The county is not distinctive on, we've seen a couple, a couple of maps drawn that allows one easement to the west and a new one that says one to the east. Honestly, like I say, we didn't come here for this. 10 acre is where I want it to stay. That is one of the reasons we purchased here. And we like our peace and quiet.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board and supervisors. My name is Victoria Rossi. I live on the adjacent property to the one that is trying to be rezoned, so it is an immediate effect of my land as well as for my family. I recently moved to the area to raise my daughter in a rural community, in a rural area, so that she will know a little bit simpler life, but still have access to town and a good school education system as she gets older. Our plans are to use that area for agriculture for our immediate 11 acres that reside next to the one in question. We would completely oppose this because we would like to have the area stay at a 10-acre minimum to limit disruption of a lot of traffic flow that may increase if other people decide to break down their properties to five-acre parcels, as well as still allow for the rural community of open range and allow the kettle in the area to also be there, as well as the wildlife. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill Defritas.
My name is Bill Defritas. I live in the area that's more commonly known as the Cedar Hills Ranch vicinity. My wife and I moved here about seven years ago because we wanted to get away from high-density areas. We have a piece of land, approximately 22 acres, where we have the luxury of raising horses, and we like the rural community just the way it is. I'm here to make a statement on behalf of most of the folks in the Cedar Hills area that they would like things to stay the way they are. We are opposed to rezoning to five acres. My only question is, because I'm not a politician, when will this be heard and decided by the board?
Right now.
Thank you very much.
Mary Robinson.
Good morning, Chairman and supervisors. It's good to be back. Mary McCord Robinson, I too live in the Cedar Hills vicinity. I have 40 acres out there. I've been there 16 years. I don't want to see a change. I think 10 acres is too small, and I would really hate to see it go to five. So that's my position, my husband's position, and very much the community of Cedar Hills. Thank you.
Thank you. Carrie Rook.
I live about a half a mile from the property. Are any question for subdivision? I am here to oppose that. I live on 20 acres. We moved here recently, as well as some of the other neighbors. We moved because it's a rural area, we want to keep it that way. I like the deer in the backyard, you know, the wildlife all around. We don't want to see the roads get widened out, we don't want to see the roads get paved or anything like that. We like it just the way it is, and we hope that the board will
Thank you, sir.
Take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ken Lyman.
I live at 1628 South Reese Road. My name is Ken Lyman, and I'm opposed to this, along with my neighbor in front who could not be here. His name is also Ken Simpson, I think is his last name. But they're opposed to it, they couldn't be here because of health concerns on their part. There's a 15-acre parcel across from Ken and next to Victoria. If Mark is allowed to go through with this and rezoning five acres, or 10 to five, that 15 acres could soon become three fives. I was told, what right do I have to oppose or to object to something someone's doing with their own land? Well, that works both ways. By him doing what he's doing, then that affects all of us around there that would like to maintain the 10-acre minimum just the way it is. I think this sets a very bad precedence for that area. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. James Pachinko.
My name is James Pachinko. I live in also the Cedar Hills area also. I am also opposed to this because of the same reasons that everybody else expressed. Also for a neighbor in front of my house as well, to represent them as well too, but also opposed.
Thank you.
Name's Sean Meisner, 10375 East Windup Trail, just about a half a mile from the property that we're speaking of. This is a perfect example of what we don't need in Cedar Hills and Mesa. The owner is attempting to change the rules so we can benefit and actually sell his property. Last hearing, I was here and I spoke. They actually asked Mark a few questions, and he actually lied. They asked him why he would wanted to rezone from 10 acres to five acres. His answer was to create a legacy for his kids. Well, they then asked him, why would you split it up if you want to create a legacy for your children? Well, he didn't have an answer for that. Well, the next question was, so are you going to sell? And he said yes. So his idea of creating a legacy for his kids, or split up his 10 acres to five acres and sell. So this is a means to an end. If this was to start, we could go from neighbors having 40 acres, and they could split it up eight ways. So you could have eight new neighbors. I moved to Cedar Mesa to be free. I'm a veteran, I respect my neighbors, and I'm a law-abiding citizen. I moved to Kingman basically to come here, retire, and die. So I don't want anything to change, if you know what I mean, okay? So I'm 100% in opposition to this. Like I said, this is the last thing we need. Last time, Mark complained about the roads. It's so funny when someone complains about the roads, but when we all contribute, all of our neighbors have gotten money together to fix the roads and grade the roads. Well, Mark, he was one of the only people that didn't contribute. We contributed 50 bucks apiece. It's, you know, and he said, last time, he said we should use the money from taxes to fix our roads. Well, that's exactly what we don't need, is any more taxes, especially in this time period, if you know what I mean. Obviously, as someone who doesn't care about the community, and to finish off, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. That's the last person that was signed up. Is there anybody else who wishes to address the board on this issue? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing. Hearing none, I will close the public hearing. The Commission recommended denial by unanimous vote.
Chairman Johnson.
Chairman Johnson.
Supervisor Lincoln Felcher?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to deny resolution 2021-052.
Do we have a second?
Chairman Johnson.
Let's see if I get a second and then we'll-
This is in my area and I'm also a property owner in Cedar Hills. And I agree with every comment that was said here this morning. I received several phone calls, text messages, and emails. So I agree with Mr. Supervisor Lincoln Felcher's motion. I will second it and I believe it's the right thing to do to deny this rezon.
Will there be any further discussion?
Chairman Johnson, point of clarification, I believe I understand the intent of the Board. The resolution is written to deny the rezones. So approval of the resolution would deny the rezones.
Thank you.
And that was the motion that was made? Okay.
So it's understood in the room that if we approve the resolution, it will be denied. All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same side? Motion carries. I have number 46 of the public hearing, resolution 2021-052. I have no one signed up. If anybody would like to address the Board? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of the Board?
Chairman Johnson, I'll make a motion that we approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same side? Motion carries. I have number 47 of the public hearing. I will open that. Resolution 2021-053. I have no one signed up. Anybody from the public wish to address the Board? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of the Board?
Chairman Johnson, motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
It's left the conference.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same side? Motion carries. I have number 48 of the public hearing on resolution 2021-054. I have no one signed up. Is there anybody from the public wishing to address the Board? I will close the public hearing. Pleasure of the Board.
Chairman Johnson, motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same side? Motion carries. I have number 49 of the public hearing, which I will open, resolution 2021-03. I do have people signed up. Larry Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board. Larry Adams, Bullhead City, Arizona. I'm here representing Mojave Valley Contractors Association and we are opposed to the adoption of the 2018 building code. I believe the Board was provided with county justification for adopting the building code. Pretty lengthy document, about 20 items in color. We did respond to that in writing. It's my belief that that was included in your packet. Therefore, I won't dwell on the specifics of that. I would like to make it clear that we're up here defending the consumer, not contractors. Whatever our costs as contractors are, we just add it to the price of the house. So we're here defending consumers, not contractors, because there's nobody else to defend the consumers. Affordable housing is a real problem in this country. If any of you have kids or grandkids, you know what a problem it is to get into a house. In fact, there are a number of bills currently pending in the legislature trying to deal with affordable housing. Now, the building code is not the sole cause of not having affordable housing, but it's certainly a contributing factor and it continues to get worse. I know of no reason under the, at all, to make the building code more complicated, more expensive. Everybody wants to know how much more will it cost if we adopt the 2018 building code. We can't tell you that because we don't know how it's going to be enforced and therefore we can't put a dollar figure on it. What I can tell you is, I've been in this business 56 years. It don't get better, it gets worse. I know of no justification for making the building code more stringent. There's no problem out here we're trying to deal with. If there were, we could amend the building codes we have now. In fact, adopting this code, and it says that here, you have to do a number of amendments on the new building code because it's more complicated and there's no justification for it. We can amend the existing building code as these, we can amend this one. There's absolutely no justification for doing this and we are defending consumers. We're not defending contractors. Whatever it cost us, we just add it to the price of the house. And people can afford it now. Everybody thinks because we have clients coming out of California that have sold a house, got a pocket full of money, that this is going to go on forever. It's not. And our residents in Bull, in Mojave County in Arizona, they don't have that pocket full of money. I thank you.
Thank you, sir. John Caponte, Caponte Hall?
Good morning, Chair and Supervisors. My name is John Caponetto. I reside in Fort Mojave, Arizona. I'm here today also in opposition to adopting the 2018 building codes and it's for all the reasons that have already been previously expressed that are in your packet. One of the things that I'd like to add to this is, in the last meeting with the Planning and Zoning Commission, that was on the 14th of April, Chairperson Larry Morse came up with an objection to Appendix G of the International Building Code. Appendix G has been substantially expanded and conflicts with other floodplain ordinances with heavy reliance on ASCE 24. Now, ASCE 24 is published by the American Society of Civil Engineers. Strict reading of Appendix G prohibits any development in a floodplain. To quote Larry Morse at that time, "You can't plant a tree without getting a permit." Also, the staff's floodplain manager also agreed that there was conflicts in Appendix Now, I read all of Appendix G. I read portions of a summary of ASCE 24 and I am not a professional engineer. I could not find the exact areas that are in conflict because I'm just not versed in that language. Staff's reply to Larry Morse's comments about the conflicts was that, "We're going to handle this the same way that we've always handled it before." So essentially, you don't have to worry about the language in Appendix G. Now, with that in mind, you've got to keep in mind that the staff that's existing now may not be the staff in the future. People that are on the commission now may not be on the commission in the future. And the way that that particular segment of the code is interpreted is not going to be interpreted the same in the future as it is now. So you must remember that the written language will be the letter of the law. And if there are conflicts in that written language, we should not be adopting that So with that in mind, I would move to make sure that Appendix G does not get adopted or that amendments be implemented to Appendix G prior to its adoption. Okay, because if you tried to amend it after adoption, the only way that you're going to get it resolved is through appealing it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mary Azarmi?
Good morning, Chairman Johnson, Supervisors. My name is Mary Azarmi. I live in 1896 Clear Lake Drive, Fort Mojave, Arizona. I'm before you as the Chairman of the Code Advisory Board. Mojave County in the tri-state area is the only jurisdiction that provides this opportunity to the community and also to the list of professionals to be able to review and dissect the code to make it compatible to the Mojave County and jurisdictions that we have. As you know, International Building Code is a code that basically is one size fit all. Basically, from New York, Detroit, everywhere, they have the same code. However, each jurisdiction has the opportunity to take a look at it and make it compatible to the area by the means of the amendments. And that's exactly what it was assigned to the Code Advisory Board to review it. We basically went through the whole, you know, the chapters, different sections, to see what differences we have between Code 2006, 2012, and now 2018. And those amendments that was mentioned are basically taking some of the items that are bothersome to basically the cost factors, like in a state of California, they have adopted Title 24, they have energy code and all that, which is very expensive, including like the forest sprinkler system and all that. So all those were taken out and we made it compatible to the community that we have. As you know, Code Advisory Board consists of builders, engineers, and also insurance people and other sectors of the community to be able to review it. Each section of this was assigned over a span of time. There were some public gatherings and meetings and through those processes, you know, was discussed and reviewed. So as I mentioned to you before, Mojave County has the only, is the only jurisdiction that provides that opportunity to both sides of the table to be able to have a healthy debate on the discussion of the code and before they adopt it. And then they basically present it to the Planning and Zoning Commission and of course, the ultimate approval has to come in to you. I'm available to answer any question you might have.
Thank you.
Chairman Johnson.
Supervisor Angus.
So if you can customize it to your community, why couldn't you do that to the 2012 codes? Why do you have to adopt this new codes and kind of go backwards? How I understand it is, a lot of communities are staying with the old codes and then, you know, just putting in what fits their community. Why go all the way there and then that opens up liability for contractors, correct?
Chairman Johnson, Supervisor Angus, that's exactly what we did in 2012 as well. So, you know, as the code goes forward, you know, 2006, 2012, and now 2018, 2012 we had same amendments too. So basically what it is, is that, you know, some of the items we have, if you look at the 2018, with the amendments provided, it is basically very close to the 2006. But again, it has the name and body of 2018, but in terms of, in general, in terms of the building, because as you know, I'm a builder, I'm a developer, and, you know, I can assure you that is the case.
Okay. So one of the bigger changes is the energy part of it. And that is a very expensive thing. So are you saying that Mojave County goes in and sort of takes what it wants? But again, why can't we just add that to the two? Why do we have to go that extra step? I just don't see the benefit of that.
Yeah. Chairman Johnson, Supervisor Angus, when I came here 31 years ago, we were on Code 88. And, you know, at that time, there were, the construction material and all that was totally different. As you go to forward, things changes and, you know, it needs to be more compatibility to the code, like Simpson, which basically provides the attachment, at that time wasn't really available as much, as much as now. So like giving you an example on the energy that you were talking about, we haven't adopted in Mojave County. This is not proposed to you to adopt energy code. However, in our community, we are doing that anyway. So we are using dual pane, low E windows, some with thermal break, which is already part of it. Or the Code 2018 is asking for insulation to be R38. It's very common in our area, Mojave County, that everybody uses R50. So those are already there. So what I'm saying is that, you know, those are the amendments that like, you know, the Title 24 or the forest sprinklers and all that are not part of the code. So that's what we are talking about.
And just one more question. In all of your meetings with the building committee and everything, did anyone talk about the end user, as Mr. Adams talked about, the people who will be paying this because the contractors are not going to, are not going to eat this? It's going to be, as it always does, all these regulations. Have you, is there any idea what this may mean to the buyer?
Chairman Johnson, Supervisor Angus, yes. The opportunity was given by the county, not by the Code Advisory Board, but Code Advisory Board also opened that to discussion. We asked them to provide any item, because we studied it, you know, through the whole thing by the Code Advisory Board. We asked the public to provide any item that they think that is going to be bothersome or causes unnecessary expense, you know, for, you know, basically the builders. And there was none suggested on that one. They said that, you know, there should be something in there that would be causing that problem, but there was nothing identified as, you know, the thing, because we were open to discuss it. And that's what we did. You know, we went there to a lot of different, give you an example, one of the items that they were going to have on the Code 2018 was to have a GFI circuit behind, you know, dishwasher. Well, you know, some of you that might have some experience in construction, if, you know, something happens and it trips that GFI behind the dishwasher, you have to pull the dishwasher out and push a button and, you know, do it that way. So all those were unnecessary items were taken out of those items. So we really did due diligence through the whole process. And there were builders like Mackey, Doug Mackey, as you know, and myself, and engineers like Prophet and others that, you know, they were part of the package. And as I said, I'm not, I'm not here selling to 2018 to you. I'm just saying that, you know, what was assigned to the Code Advisory Board and what we did in the process. And I believe that, you know, as a contractor, as a builder, as an engineer, I can tell you that the 2018 that you're, is before you, it is basically very similar to 2006. It doesn't cost. I mean, the cost that we are talking about, these days, from January until now, the cost that going out is basically the material. The material has gone up so much, like lumber, like, you know, copper, like PVC, everything has gone up significantly. Those are the one that is going to be imposed on those housing or commercial projects or any that is going to be. And, you know, those are the major expense which we don't have an answer as builders, as contractors, why this exaggerated amount of price increases there.
Said that was my last, but why do you suppose that Bullhead City said no thanks to the 2000? They're still operating very well on the 2006. And they, you know, they gave me a lot of their reasons that made sense. So again, it seems like we change things for the sake of changing things. What problem are we addressing? What, what is it that, that there's this need to put even more regulations on?
Yeah, I leave that answer to, you know, the building official to answer that, but as I mentioned to you before, the 2006 to 2012, there were some changes. But 2018, it seems the code has mellowed down and is back to almost like 2006. You're absolutely right. Homes that I built back in 1988, they're still, they're still up. There is no problem, there is no damage or anything like that. Are the new homes better, more efficient? I would say yes. You know, but again, those homes that we built back in 88 or even beyond that, I assume that, you know, they're still up and, you know, there is no problem.
Any other questions?
Any other questions? Building Code Advisory Board and the Planning and Zoning Commission both recommended approval by unanimous vote. Does anybody else have any questions with planning and zoning? Do we have a motion? Supervisor Cool.
It's for staff, actually.
Mr. Walsh.
Morning.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. As I took several hours to go over the backup, the 281-page backup, the first thing that stood out to me is apparently if you don't follow the building code, that's a class two misdemeanor, that's punishable by a fine of 750 to up to $7,500 and four months in jail. To me, that's problematic because this is a civil issue. This is not a criminal issue. You, if, and it doesn't say knowingly, it just says if you don't follow it. So let's say theoretically, you could change your own water heater and not pull a permit, and then we've got, you could spend four months at the Gray Bar Hotel. To me, that's just wrong. I don't know, I don't believe that was added, but that exists already. Once upon a time, somebody approved that. I can't vote for something that criminalizes this kind of behavior. Because it's, essentially, you have a natural right to maintain your own structure without government interference. I could throw in that I descended from people who would not be ruled, and it applies to pretty much everything in my life. You're gonna raise the cost of new homes. We currently are looking for workforce development money to build workforce housing. When I came to this county in 1995, an average, I say that, say a forklift driver who may have been pulling down $20 an hour working in a warehouse in, in California, could not afford to buy his own home in California. But he could move to Lake Havasu City and take a 40% cut in wages, but that individual could own his own home. Homeownership provides stability. If you have a transient community, people, they're moving in and out all the time. If they have the ability to buy their own home, they're gonna stay. And the problem we have now is housing prices have risen so high that they're out of reach for the people that work for wages in our county. That's gonna create a problem for us now, it's gonna create a long-term problem. Every time we change the building code and drive up the price of construction, that prices people out of a home. This will price people out of a home. I don't know about you, but I've been buying a home before, and it, you're down to the, you know, if you lost 20 bucks on your wages, you weren't gonna qualify for that loan. That's what these kind of things do. The flood, gee, the flood control thing is just, that's gotta go. That's just problematic. We shouldn't even have brought the thing forward with that, with that conflict there. There's also, we address in the, the building maintenance portion of this, that you can't work on auto. Essentially, it says you cannot work on automobiles on your own property. So if I'm building a street rod in my garage, I'm somehow in violation of this maintenance code. It says we'll address this under the zoning issue, but the problem is, this is, words mean things, folks. I spent eight years in the legislature where we argue over dots and tittles because they're important, because people will come along after us and they'll use those words to interpret things. The stuff has to be right. To me, that's problematic. That shouldn't be there, they should have struck that, that should have been struck from the code. We added a portion for tiny homes, which is interesting, which it says the clearance you need be in front of a water closet, a water closet's a toilet, in a tiny home is 15 inches. I don't have a problem with only having 15 inches in front of a toilet if that's what somebody wants to do. I have sized 13 feet, but, so that might be problematic for me, but we're writing a different code for tiny homes. If it's okay in a tiny home, why can't I squeeze one in a half bath in a house? A full-size house? To me, that's kind of ridiculous. Let's see if I covered all my stuff here. Probably not. The, to me, as a contractor, bear in mind, I'm biased, I've been an air conditioning contractor for 38 years. I held the air conditioning license in California, a general building license in California, I held a home builder license in Arizona. To me, a lot of times, it appeared that when building officials went to seminars, suddenly that drove up the cost of construction. I don't see houses falling down. So I wonder, what problem are we trying to fix? We've been framing houses the same way for over 100 years. They don't fall down. In places that they fall down, they fall down from weather events, and those people address those issues, Florida, Gulf Coast, Southeast and whatnot. A lot of times, I think the reason they update these codes is to sell new code books, because every contractor out there's gotta buy a new set of code books. These code books are like the Bible.
We, we have pictures. One second.
A visual aid?
We have a visual aid.
These code books are like the Bible. Larry's holding up one. You know, I, I read the Bible quite a bit, but I don't know everything that's in the Bible, but I'm expected to know everything that's in that book, or I'm going to the pokey. I'm gonna spend four months in the Gray Bar Hotel. A lot of times, they do these things to get, manufacturers do this to get their products embedded into the code so that you have to buy their product. That's an issue. Mehdi brought it up. Our houses are pretty dang well insulated now, and that was something that I noticed as a California contractor coming over here. The things that we do make our homes more energy efficient than California's Title 24. Because they play games with Title 24. You can put single pane windows up with a pull-down shade, and somehow that's supposedly as energy efficient as a dual pane window. So there's games that are played. We don't need to tell people that they need to have an efficient home in Mojave County. Mojave County's hot, they know it makes dollar sense. It's gonna get done. If you have people building poorly insulated homes, those homes will not sell well. This is also gonna drive up the cost of existing homes because part of the price of existing homes is based on the price of new homes. If the, apparently, the, everybody was fond of the 2006 building code, maybe we should adopt the 2000, go back to the 2006 building code and address any issues that we have. But I don't see the need for it. I'm not willing to vote on something that criminalizes my constituents for a civil offense. I'm surprised that that ever got in, and that was probably the most striking thing, that a civil issue would end you up with four, four months in the Gray Bar Hotel and then a crime on your record, too. But thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Cool. Do you have any comments on any of that?
If I may, Chairman Johnson, yes, please. With regards to the class two misdemeanor, if I could lean on Attorney Espin, I believe that is a typical punishment for a violation of a county ordinance. Is that correct?
By, by law, we cannot go into felonies, and there's only three classes, I believe, of misdemeanors, class ones, two, and three. So I imagine it's probably consistent, but I can't say definitively, but I would imagine it's probably a class two, certainly not a class one.
So, so a class two misdemeanor, as you had mentioned, that, that's been in the, the ordinance for some time now, and, and that is a typical zoning violations. You'll find that in the zoning ordinance as well, that, that violation of that, you'll, you'll have, have a class two misdemeanor, a possibility of, up to a class two misdemeanor. The intent of the codes is really to, to provide safety, life safety and welfare for the, the end consumer. I know the end consumer's been mentioned a number of times here. When somebody comes to buy a house, I just sold my house, I'm looking to buy a new house, I have the, the assumption and the expectation that that house has been built to, to a certain standard, to, to the most recent codes at that time. What, adopting the most recent codes is, is, fulfills that expectation that that end consumer does have in purchasing that home, that it's built to a code, that it's built to a standard that's been approved both by the local government but is a, a national standard. Cost has been mentioned a number of times. The National Home Builders Association has looked at this code change, and from what we can see through their studies, you're looking at about a hundred dollar increase going from the 12 to the 18 code. So cost really, what's implemented through the codes and, and with our amendments, really you're, you're seeing more in inflation and more in material costs than you'll see through what's, what's being imposed by this change in code. Appendix G, appendix G is added to the codes. It's been put in place more of a, of a, for jurisdictions that don't have a flood plain ordinance. Mojave County does have a flood plain ordinance, and therefore appendix G really is redundant. I'd have no objection to removing appendix G. And I just would like to note that Larry Morris, the Chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission, did raise his questions about that, but ultimately, he did vote in favor of, of the code adoption. So really, appendix G, if that is a sticking point, that's something that we, I'd have no objection to removing that as we already have a flood plain ordinance in place. International Property Maintenance Code, we use that code as part of our abatement actions. That's our, our, basically, as we go out and look at dangerous buildings, dilapidated buildings, the International Property Maintenance Code is what we use to, to basically assess those properties and ultimately abate them. Tiny homes is another appendix, basically about, probably about two, three years ago, with rising costs of, of homes, the ICC implemented the, the tiny home, or they, they created this tiny home appendix, basically as an option for jurisdictions that, that want to encourage those tiny homes and allow for that more affordable building. We, hearing, you know, some, some constituents have, have expressed interest in that, so we, we proposed adopting it as well. Again, it's an appendix, if that's a sticking point, that's something that, that I would have no problem removing at this time. Trying to think, a couple of reasons for, for why going to this code. We have been doing a remarkable job with our inspectors and our plans examiners in getting all of them certified in the codes, being able to go to trainings and to understand what they're out there. One thing I will not tolerate of any of my inspectors or my plans examiners is because I said so. I want them to be able to know where it is in the code and be able to, to explain that to their, their customer of, hey, this is why I'm imposing it. It's not, not because I say so, but the code allows for this, the code requires it this way. And by having that training, I believe our relationship with our builders has, has really improved over the years. So, training-wise, I can no longer send them to anything, 2012 training is not available, 2012 certification is not available. So by going to the 18, that allows for my inspectors and my plans examiners to get trained on the code that we're actually enforcing here. Let's see, what else? 2018 provides for more clarification. As they've gone through, they haven't, they haven't added a whole lot more of, of new requirements, rather, they, they've clarified a lot of the older ones, but they've also lessened some of the requirements. In Bullhead alone, we, we had some, some demand for being able to use the 2018 codes because they were, they were, they had a lower wind loading, and we've, we've had comments in some of our public meetings that actually cost for metal buildings have gone down with the 2018 codes as opposed to the 2012 codes because of the, those wind loading changes. Ultimately, the, the 2018 codes provide more options for our builders. It's not about being more restrictive with them, it's about finding, the, the codes, ultimately, it's a prescriptive method. If, if a builder wants to build something that's outside the code, they can hire an engineer and, and they can design it and they can build it. The code sets up a lot of those, those methods for them that they can just pick and choose and be able to build it out of that code without having to hire that engineer. So really, we're providing additional options for our builder, our builders to be able to, to produce the products that they produce. I don't know if I addressed everything, but I'd be happy to answer any additional questions.
Chairman Johnson.
Any additional questions, Mr. Walsh? Supervisor Bishop.
So in, in the northwestern part of Mojave County, which is my district, we, we have some affluent homes in areas like they have in Bullhead City and Lake Havasu, but we also have some, some remote areas where people are moving in and they're just slapping up a few, two before as a, a couple pieces of plywood and, and tin for a roof and calling that a tiny home. And so I've really been excited and have been waiting and waiting for the tiny homes appendix to, to come to, to vote of this full board so that we can give some guidance and some control and, and make some affordable living, tiny homes, if, if you want to call them that, but some, some affordable homes in, in these areas where, where it's depressed and, and there, there is a need. And so I, I think what, what I look for is the, the safety and the welfare of, of my constituents and, and the people that are moving into this county thinking that we have no building codes. And I, I hate to, to take a step backward, but I, I would be willing to, to vote on, on this code if appendix G was, was removed and maybe that could be revisited another time, but I really, really would be disappointed if the tiny homes, part of this is removed, so. I don't really have any questions. I just wanted to, to let my board members know that that's something that's very, very important in, in my district.
Chairman Johnson.
Supervisor Lingefelter, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Chairman Johnson. Hopefully, you're ready. Director Walsh? My only question would be, there's a, a valley within the county that is directly on the other side of, like, city of Kingland limit. Does that, pardon my pronunciation?
I'm sorry, Supervisor Lingefelter, I didn't, I didn't hear the question.
I think he's on speakerphone. I think that's the interference we're hearing.
Can you repeat the question?
No, I actually got this, my, to my ear, that's okay. I have no questions, I'll, I'll wait.
Thank you. Supervisor Cool.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My opposition is not to the tiny house addendum. I think that it's fine to add the addendum. My point was, you're drawing a different, you're saying that the clearances can be smaller in a tiny house than they could be in a standard-sized house, which, if it's for my safety, then I would then be less safe in a tiny house than I would be in my full-size house. That, that's the point, is if, if, if 15 inches is fine in front of a toilet in a tiny house, it ought to be fine inside of a full-size house also. So it's not that I'm against the tiny houses. If, if 15 inches is safe, it's safe. So that should be the clearance in, in a full-size house also. That was my point on that. Does the county take any liability if a house falls down after?
I'll lean on Attorney Espin. I believe, though, however, if, if we've inspected a house and, and signed off on that, if, if we were negligent in our inspections, I, I would assume that we would maintain some liability.
Liability in a tort action is always, you've got a duty, breach of the duty, there's been, because of the breach, there's been a cause of harm and there's damages. Four elements, always in a, in a tort action. So you'd have to show that we'd have a duty, that we breached our duty, and that that caused some kind of harm to the person. It'd be pretty difficult to get in action, partly because the decisions that this board makes, and then the, the ones that are implemented by the staff, you have a certain amount of immunity. There is absolute immunity for legislative acts and so on. So there's one, oftentimes, a defense that, that the county can assert for those kind of actions. However, if somebody was negligent, if the, if the staff acted in a negligent manner and then that negligent action caused harm, then it could, then it would be. I think in an instance here where if they negligently, negligently signed off on something, then yeah, I think there could be potential for liability. But if you're trying to say that any kind of liability for the actions of the board is pretty unlikely, given the, the, the absolute immunity that you would have, that the board, that the county would have.
So I would also argue, if you have a structural failure of a building, that going back and suing the county would, you would be unsuccessful.
Yeah.
I always had an interesting idea that rather than having the government be the one that certifies buildings, we might have a private company, say Lloyds of London, and you build the house to their specs, they give you a structural warranty that the thing won't fail, and then you get something for your money instead of paying the government for a building inspection. That's just my weird libertarian thought pattern, but if I wanted to, as a builder, I, if I didn't build a house to FHA standards or to VA standards, what they would make you do is go buy an additional structural warranty, and that's a you do is go buy an additional structural warranty, and that's essentially just an insurance policy. But I still argue you don't see buildings collapse. You don't see, you should take a look at the trailer that we bought from Fannie Mae. You would be surprised how much weight drywall screws can really hold in the real world, because the guy that owned the place before me thought you could build a patio cover out of drywall screws. It still stands and it's been up for 20 years. It'll get torn down soon enough, eventually, but it, it didn't blow down. So I think a, a lot of this stuff is overkill, and it just drives up the cost of housing and makes housing unaffordable for a, a lot of people. Thank you.
Chairman Johnson. Supervisor Linganfelter sent his question to me, if I can do that for him. His question was, would adopting different versions of codes between city and county create any annexation problems for the city of Kingman in the future? And then he also noted that he's against Appendix G.
Thank you. To respond to that, I, I don't believe that there would be any problem in future annexation if there's separate codes. Basically, if, if the city were to annex further on, enlarge their boundaries, those portions that they, that they annex would then fall under whatever city ordinances that they have, assuming that, that existing structures would like in the county be, would, would no long, would not require additional inspections to bring them up to the 18 code or whatever code that the city is on. So yeah, I, I don't see any issues between different codes and, and annexation. To address the Appendix G, basically at, at this meeting, if, if the board elected to, a motion could include removal of Appendix G or to not include Appendix G.
Supervisor Lingan?
Thank you. As far as the tiny homes, if we wanted to put codes in our old codebook for tiny homes, we just, we can do that. We don't need to go to 2018 to do that.
Sorry, Chairman Johnson, Supervisor Angus, a simple answer is, is yes. You could, we could make amendments that would allow for tiny homes. The, the approval of the appendix, the 2018 appendix, which is the, the first appendix the ICC has created for tiny homes, the approval of that would possibly conflict with existing codes that we have. So, basically, the appendix would reference 2018 codes, so what we would have to do is, is look at how to, to merge that or marry it up with the current codes.
Well, if jurisdictions are taking the 2018 and then taking things out and putting things in, then we can do that too without adopting the 2018 codes. Do you still have that picture up there, the visual aid about the?
It's still up here, yeah.
Can, can you put it up? Okay, so I actually took this in Mr. Adams' office, he was kind enough to lay them out for me. So that little one, that little thin one there is 1997, and then it kind of tripled into 2006. And every time people have to buy these books, they're several thousand dollars, you know, whenever there are regulations, whenever the government, there's, people are making money, just like what Supervisor Gould was saying. People are benefiting from this. Everyone, you know, you can make an argument that they're safer, but again, I, I don't see things falling down. My home was built in 2005, it's still standing, you know? I don't know what could be, is going to be added in 2018 that would have made my home better without my choice. I mean, if I want to be energy efficient, I can do that. I can, I can make my house that. That should be a choice of the, of the buyer. It shouldn't be the government telling you, this is what you have to do. You know, it doesn't matter you can't afford it, doesn't matter you don't need it here in Mojave County because of our weather, you know? And that's one of my problems. I mean, we run for office as Republicans and we always say, we have to get the regulations, the government out of our lives, and here we are. This is a perfect example of something that, you know, I'm not a builder, I, I trust the builders know what they need and what they don't need and what works and what doesn't work. I just hate that the government says in every circumstance, you have to do this. And I know you, you know, you customize and you do that, but why can't you do it without us going to a whole different thing? And then again, I think it opens up whole new liabilities without doing that. Take a wait and see attitude and see what happens. I'm, I'm just, for those reasons, and I want to thank the Mojave Contract Association for putting together, we rarely get that kind of thing and it was so, you know, each, each item was addressed. Some I agree with, some I didn't, but I think as a whole, for all the reasons talked about, I'm a no vote on the new, on the new codes.
Chairman Johnson.
Supervisor Bishop?
Director Walsh, if we were to continue this for a couple of weeks or a month, could you address these various issues that the supervisors brought forward and, and bring this back?
Absolutely, be happy to. Excuse me.
With, with that, with that being said, I'd like to make a, a motion that we continue for, how long would you need, Tim? Two weeks? A month?
Thirty days would probably be beneficial to be able to go through each one and, and really address it, yeah.
Okay, I will make that thirty days then.
You have a second?
Second.
You have a motion and a second for the discussion? I would like to say, Mr. Walsh, we have Ms. Ballard here, and when I came on, we didn't enforce building codes in the incorporated areas. And we had a lot of homes that were not built to any kind of standards, and what you were saying, where people come over and they go to a house, they, they always believed that that house has some kind of building code standards, and I think we've done a good job of bringing that up. My concerns are with tiny homes, I, I think they lead to underdeveloped areas, but we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Item number 50, this is a discussion, possible action, approve the purchase of enough additional ballots. Anybody have any questions, Mr. Temper?
Mr. Chairman, board members?
Yes.
I'm going to address this for you today, if I may. The board continued this item from two previous meetings. We clearly understand that the board desired to pause or postpone action until the Maricopa County 2020 election audit is complete. Instead of taking it today or the next board meeting, we believe we have time to wait. We would like to wait until the second meeting of June to allow for that audit to be completed. And if it isn't, we will come in June, have it on the second board meeting, provide all the information that we have available at that time and ask for the board for action. We want to balance between two priorities. One is to accommodate your desire to wait for the completion of that audit, and the other is to prevent any, the loss of those funds. So, with that, with that said, would like to suggest that this item be continued or we will bring it back to the board in the second meeting of June, unless the audit is completed prior to that time and we have time to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
I guess the questions I have, we continue this, hoping the legislature would do something, and they seem to be mired down in lawsuits. I guess the question would be for Mr. Esplin, no matter what the decision, there'll be no change to the election with what Maricopa does or doesn't do, is that correct?
Yes, that's my understanding, is that this is, will not have any basis, and there's two different things. I'm, I'm trying to follow a little bit of the news like anybody else, and if I, if I understand correctly, and I'm relying upon the news, so I don't know if it's accurate or not, but I believe it was the, it was the Senate's attorney who even said that. The Senate's attorney said, hey, this is not going to affect the election, it's not going to change the outcome or anything like that. So this is coming directly from the Senate's attorney who is saying that. The second thing is, even, you just do the math, you, there's not, the, the, the number of electoral votes that President Biden won exceed the number that would come from the Arizona electoral vote. So it was approximately 70, I think? And so, Arizona has how many electoral votes? How many?
Eleven.
Eleven? So obviously 11 is not going to be enough to change that, even if they could. I mean, so from a practical standpoint, it's not going to, and even the Senate's own attorneys have also stated that, this will not affect the outcome of the election.
Thank you. Do we, we still want to continue this or do we want to?
Yeah, until the, the audit is done. They have to, what did you say, they had to be done, they have the fairgrounds until?
Well, they have the fairgrounds, but then they have to stop it because of graduations, so now we're looking at end of June.
Well, I'll, I'll be honest with you, I'm not for voting centers anyway, so I'm probably going to be a no vote, so.
I mean, with that, do we, do we want to just discuss it? And I don't know whether the election or the recount will do anything.
I think the idea of waiting for the, for the audit is to see what, what may have gone wrong and to change, you know, some of the ways that we vote because of that. I've been told that, that some believe that voting centers are the reason that they, there are so many problems.
Chairman Johnson.
Supervisor Bishop?
So if, if the audit really has no effect on whether or not we have voting centers or not, and it certainly doesn't, I don't see a reason to continue it. I think we should just make a decision based on whether or not we want voting centers in Mojave County or not. It really shouldn't have anything to do with the, the state of Arizona and the audit that they're in, in the midst of right now, because once the audit is, is finished, it's still not going to change the way this board votes, I don't believe.
Supervisor Gould?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So let's say that the audit comes up with a problem with vote centers. That might change some, the way somebody votes if we wait until the report for the audit comes out. That would be the only reason that we might wait. It's not going to change the outcome of the election, the election was certified by the state, it was certified by the Vice President. There's other states that are still in play with audits and whatnot, but I think if, if the audit does uncover problems with vote centers, we certainly don't want to go ahead with a vote center in our county. So that would be the only logic to wait, to continue until the, the second meeting in June.
But are they doing anything with the vote centers? I thought they were just doing it with the county. That's, that's my question, I thought they were just seeing if the ballots, they're checking to say if it looks like they voted for Trump and it was counted for Biden, I thought it was, those were the things they were looking at, not so much at the vote center.
That's interesting, so if, while they're doing the audit, when they get the boxes of ballots, do they know where it's coming from? Like what precinct it came from, whether that's a precinct that uses voting centers? I don't know. I'm just against voting centers.
They're, they're doing, they know the precincts, that was one of my questions, you know, if they knew what Supervisor Angus voted and said, did you vote for this person or that person? But they're, they're able to tell the precincts because that's how they're, they're counted. And I guess they could, from that, I, I don't know if they could tell if it went to a vote center because you can vote early or vote by mail or, you know, vote on Election Day, so I don't, I don't know. Supervisor Linganfelter, did you have any concerns or questions or remarks?
Chairman Johnson, he sent some remarks to me since we're having trouble hearing him. His comment was, he is against voting centers if, and he is not convinced that they are a dramatic improvement over what we have now.
All right, from listening to the board, I don't know, but I can kind of see a vote. I don't know if you want to, whatever's the pleasure of the board, you want to take it now, you want to continue it?
Chairman Johnson?
Supervisor Angus?
Aye, let's see what this says. I make a motion not to approve the purchase of enough additional ballot on demand ballot marking devices to equip the current poll sites.
You have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? All right, item 51 is taken care of. Item 52, approve the adoption resolution 2021-58. Supervisor Bishop?
Thank you, Chairman Johnson. I bring this to you today because for decades, the residents in Mojave County and Clark County, Nevada have been forgotten by the federal government. I'm hopeful that these pending bills from Congressman Gozar and Congressman Stratton will bring some much needed relief and a turning point in the decades like long pursuit of justice for the downwinders who have suffered for the sake of our national security for years and years and years since the early 1950s. So, with this information, that's been documented by the National Cancer Institute, showing that lower Mojave County and lower Clark County had higher rates of radiation exposure compared to other parts of the country that are already covered by RICA, I ask you today to support this resolution 2021-058, and I also want to thank the city of Kingman for their consideration for a like resolution in their meeting tomorrow night. So with that, I make a motion to approve the resolution supporting downwinders.
Second?
You have a motion and a second for the discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Item number 53, I placed on, it's the adoption proclamation proclaiming the week of May 2nd, 2021, through May 8th, 2021, as professional county clerk of the board week in Mojave County, Arizona. I would make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Gould?
Does Hallmark make a card for this?
Yes, they do.
Thank you.
The clerk is expecting a card. We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Item 54, update of the county health director to the board of supervisors.
Chairman Johnson, members of the board, good morning, still. All right, I'll just go through some of the trends that we've seen in the last few weeks. Our case count increased last week, and that's a very mild slight increase from previous weeks. It was approximately 50%, but in the grand scheme of things, compared to what we've seen, that's still not a, a significant increase. We went from about 103 cases to 153. Cases among children are, continue to be on a decline as a whole, however, we did see a modest increase in child cases in the last week from, from previous reports. Hospitals appear to be doing quite well. We don't see any real issues within the hospitals at this point in time. Capacity issues, none. Resources, they have plenty, and we don't seem to see the staffing issues that we were seeing in the past as well. Just a brief overview on our vaccination efforts. To date, 109,346 vaccinations have been administered within Mojave County. So that accounts for, as of previous to nine o'clock this morning, 95.7% of the vaccine being used in our county. So we're, we're definitely making progress at keeping that number well above the 90 mark, which is our goal. We continue to see a decrease in demand for the vaccine within Mojave County for the last two weeks. We have been unable to distribute all of the vaccine that the county's been allocated. In those cases, that's been, in some cases, it's been rather significant. Last week, we had an allocation of 10,000 doses of Moderna, and I believe we were able to allocate about 3,500 of those. And those are all based on orders that were provided by the providers to the county to tell us what they would like or what they need, and we actually have an inventory of what they have currently on hand, and we use that along with their order to make those decisions. So for example, we see- So for example, we see a provider with several thousand doses of vaccine, we may not allocate to that particular provider, just knowing that we want that inventory to be used prior to giving them any additional vaccine. The pause on the Johnson, on the use of Johnson and Johnson vaccine has been lifted, as you know. The vaccine, the allocation for that last week was 500. So again, it's a trickle coming in, but it is coming back in, and it is back in use in the community. And starting today, just a change in the allocation process for the Moderna vaccine. In the past, what's occurred is that the state has notified the county as to what that allocation will be for the week. Again, we would collect orders from all of the providers in the community, look at the inventory that they currently have, and then make decisions on how much to actually allocate out to those, based on comments that they might add into that order form that state they're having some special events, or that they have a certain number of appointments that week. So because of the availability of the Moderna vaccine, they're actually transitioning that to an order-based system in which the providers can now, those that have completed the onboarding process, again, they can now go through the ACIS program to order their vaccine, their Moderna vaccine. So effective this week, we will continue to have access to the vaccine and will be given priority as a county. But the providers can also go directly to that particular system and order the vaccine. They can, there's an initial ordering cap of 200 doses. However, with that said, if there's a special event or activity, or they have appointments, they just need to indicate that in the comments section. And the Arizona Department of Health Services will review that and approve any additional vaccine allocation to those particular entities. So it won't be that that's the absolute cap for that for two weeks. It just means they're trying to ensure that there's no hoarding of vaccine and that people are managing their supplies and their inventory well. The Pfizer and Johnson and Johnson vaccines will continue to be allocated by the county. Pfizer, of course, we have not received directly here. Some of our retail partnerships in the county have received Pfizer, although that's very limited. We have expressed interest in ensuring that the county is provided Pfizer if they, if Pfizer receives approval for the EUA for the 12 to 15-year-olds. And that would mean we would have vaccine in each of our communities for the 12 to 17-year-olds, because Moderna and Pfizer are only currently for, sorry, not Pfizer. Moderna and Johnson and Johnson are just for the 18 and older. Any questions so far? Okay, all right. Some new guidance from the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention for fully vaccinated people. I think you've probably seen that out into the media. It allows those outdoor events and activities that you're not, it's not necessary to wear a mask, which I think as summer comes will be very helpful for people with the increase in temperatures, and it'll be of much more comfort. But anyway, I think visiting the CDC website, people can view those and have those available to them, and then make decisions for themselves, how they want to proceed. All right. There were two executive orders created and implemented by the governor in the, starting April 19th, so I'd just like to cover those very briefly. Executive Order 2021-09 bans vaccine passports and prevents state and local governments from requiring Arizona's to provide their COVID-19 vaccination status to receive a service or enter an area. The other is relevant to something that Supervisor Lingefelter has brought up related to schools. That's Executive Order 2021-10, removes the mask requirements in schools by rescinding paragraph 5 of EO 2020-51 and directing ADHS to amend existing emergency measures to be consistent with that executive order. And their emergency measure, I believe, was 2020-04. With that said, there's two important points. ADHS continues to encourage K through 12 schools to take actions consistent with all CDC recommendations and guidance. It's, again, a recommendation. And K through 12 schools still maintain the right to institute and enforce policies to mitigate COVID-19, including the use of masks. Those determinations are made by school boards. And their local, local governing bodies will make those decisions based on the needs of their community and what they feel is in the best interest. Again, we, as a public health department, make recommendations based on CDC and ADHS, and that's what they are, recommendations. That was all I had as far as my update. I was trying to keep it rather brief, but I certainly want to make myself available for any questions.
Anyone have any questions? No questions? Two things I'd like to discuss. I think that with everything dying down, maybe we could go to a beginning-of-the-month report from Director Burley, and, you know, if something major comes up, we could always place something on the agenda. And then maybe to streamline things, I know we don't like to go through a lot of red tape, but we have Lenore, who gets, who sends us the report that has the, do not give out secret information on it. It's just another step that delays the time period. I think we could do without that and just have, you could put it on the bottom, don't give out this information, because in reality, if we want to give it out, we're going to give it out anyway, so, whether Lenore sends it to us or not. So I don't know. I would make a motion to see if it would go, to go to first-of-the-month reports from Director Burley and skip the step of Lenore Knutson in the reporting. You have a second?
Motion?
Yes.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same side? Motion carries. Director Burley, we still have you up here for senior centers.
Yes, sir. Let me grab my information for that. Just one moment, please. Okay. Chairman Johnson, members of the board, I want to apologize first for needing to come back to you and bring this back before you. After the last board meeting, staff shared some information, and I learned some information that would make it very difficult for us to meet the deadline from the last board meeting. So I just want to spell out some of the issues and concerns and provide you with a suggestion on how we'd like to move forward and get your feedback on that. So as you know, we've seen significant improvements in case numbers over the past three to four weeks. Additionally, we've seen our percent, percent of 65 and older getting vaccinated increasing as well. I think we're nearing, if we're not at, right around the 60% level. So of course, this is our most vulnerable population. This is the, this is one of the more vulnerable, and this is also one of the populations that we're trying to really protect in that environment. Since late last March, congregate meals have been provided via drive-through, while homebound participants continue to have their meals delivered. While I can appreciate the importance of social interaction, of course, especially for everybody at this point, and the need to return to normal, full transition to congregate meals does not take into account the needs of those who are not comfortable eating in a congregate setting but are ineligible for the homebound program. And what I mean by that is that if we transition just to congregate and continue with our homebound, that would essentially mean that an individual would need to eat their meal in the center if they're not eligible for the homebound program. So they couldn't grab it and take it and go. We are, however, in a position where we can, we've been given an option to do the hybrid model, which would mean that we would have the congregate meal program running, we would have the drive-through process running for those few individuals that probably are not comfortable coming into the center to actually eat their meal, and then we would obviously continue our homebound program as we currently run it now. This model is used throughout the state and would meet the needs of all participants and is a recommended model from public health moving forward. To offer this model, we obviously have a couple of positions that are vacant that we're trying to fill. Those are staff vacancies. And we were looking for volunteers, and thank you Supervisor Gould for the press release. We did receive some inquiries from individuals who are interested in volunteering both in the Lake Havasu area and in Kingman. So we'd like to continue to recruit, then we need to train those individuals, and then get them on a schedule. And there is a process that we need to follow for that. But it would take a little bit more time than the May 7 deadline to really try to run those programs concurrently and meet the hybrid model and try to get that up and running. So what we're asking for is a June 1 date to actually begin to provide those congregate meals again, also offer a hybrid model, and then also, you know, a drive-through model for those individuals, and then we'll, again, continue our homebound program as we have.
Any questions? Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Denise, is there a price difference between the homebound, to the customer, to, between the homebound meals and the Meals on Wheels?
I believe they are the same program. Hang on. I have Tiara Morrison here, who's our division manager, oversees the senior programs, and so I've asked her to be here to answer some specific questions that I'm not as familiar with.
I had some constituents that were concerned. They didn't feel comfortable going back into the dining room, but they wanted to continue to come pick their meal up. So I was wondering what the, if the Meals on Wheels program is the same price as the homebound program? I might be confused here a little bit.
So, so we have the...
You have the to-go plan.
Yes, right.
You have the eat at the senior center, and then you have Meals on Wheels also, correct?
So the homebound and Meals on Wheels, correct me if I'm wrong, are the same.
Okay.
And then the drive-through is in lieu of the congregate setting at the moment.
Okay.
And so if we were to resume only congregate and not do a hybrid model, then anybody who doesn't qualify for Meals on Wheels for homebound would need to go to the center to get their meal and eat it at the center.
Okay. So it's more of a whether they're, they qualify for...
Correct.
Having it delivered to their home versus picking it up.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh huh, certainly.
Any other questions? You have a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Gould.
I move that the Board of Supervisors reconsider its action, whereas the last meeting, we voted that the senior centers return to full operation the first, or the 7th of May. That's it. We have to reconsider first.
Oh, I was mentioning to reconsider.
It's not necessary to reconsider, but you can go ahead and do it, but it's, I would just stick it as it is. We've already voted for it, and now it's a new item to extend it. I'd rather not reconsider, given that there's nothing on the agenda to reconsider. I would just rather just follow what we have right now and say, "We move to extend the deadline," if that's what you wish to do.
Okay. Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Gould.
I move that we extend the opening of the senior centers to June 1st.
You have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Go ahead.
The hybrid model.
Still have a second?
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same side? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number 56. Supervisor Angus.
I make a motion that we go into executive session.
You have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. No further discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same side?